Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 11th, 2020 to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Larson?
Yes, Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. The meeting has been properly posted. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is agenda approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is community comment. Would anyone in the audience like to make a comment? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Anne Sopersky, 7851 West Canterbury Court here in Franklin. You guys know that by now. I'm here tonight to talk about an item on your agenda tonight, the approval of school board policy 5400, which is a code of classroom conduct now called student conduct. And I guess, interestingly enough, it's been something that's been on my mind when I saw this on the agenda. I thought I'd come and talk to you. Just in terms of having the policy is great, enforcing the policy is something completely different. What I've learned through my now, what is it, 11 years and 10 years in the district, at the elementary school, there's a lot of very strict guidelines. We teach our kids how to be students. We teach our kids the requirements, the expectations. We give them little gimmicks. They know Cafuti. They know, you know, Ben Franklin. They know the Ben Expectations. They know level zero voices in the hall. It's very controlled. When you get to the middle school and then to the high school, that seems to all go out the window. And from my experience with my students, other students, other parents, current, former staff, it seems that there's just kind of this general, whatever happens, happens. Kids are allowed to do what they want with very few consequences. I mean, I could give very specific examples, but I don't know that a public venue is a good place for that. But when I look at this and I see that they, "Students shall conform to reasonable standards of socially acceptable behavior." Yelling and shouting and using vulgarity in the halls and in classrooms and talking back to teachers, that doesn't seem to fit that. Respecting person rights and property of others. Preserving degree of order necessary to the educational program that they're engaged in obeying authority and responding to those who hold that authority. That's not what I hear and see happening on a regular basis. It's not every day. It's not every classroom, but it certainly seems to be a very consistent problem, starting in middle school, moving on through the high school. We hear a lot at these meetings, you guys know I'm here. I hear a lot about being college and career ready. I don't know how we're helping our students be college and career ready if we're allowing them to talk back to teachers, talk back to their peers with that level of disrespect. So I love that you guys have this policy. I, you know, appreciate the changes you're making to it. My bigger question is where is the enforcement of the policy? What support do you hope that will, you know, the administrative team will have for teachers enforcing the policy? What support would the administrative team have in enforcing that policy? Because why have a policy if it's not going to be enforced? So, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there any other community comment? Any other comment? All right, thank you. And we'll move on to item five, the consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove the item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. School board announcements. Do we have any announcements tonight? Okay. Item seven, school board calendar. We have a Board of Education workshop on Wednesday, March 25th, 2020, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 PM. And then a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, March 25th, 2020, here at the ECC at 7:00 PM. We also have a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, April 8th, 2020, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. Item eight, reports, presentations, and other school board business. We have Franklin High School for a presentation tonight. Mr. Bolo.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hello.
In back of me assembled, we have students representing three different unique experiences that I'll make my time very brief so that you're able to spend time talking to them. As you know, we have a plan here and a goal to be part of a better community. A key part of that is having an Education for Employment Plan that predates our coherence work. But remember, that plan asks us to create experiences, capstone courses, explore career pathways that give students real experiences, in many cases with mentors, okay, creating and having experiences out in our community that allow them to really demonstrate readiness, right, for life. Your support of Saber Manufacturing, of our construction course, and of our engineering design course is necessary. Your support of that education plan is necessary. So your continued support as we explore new pathways and opportunities that we presently don't have will be necessary. This is the third year of our Education for Employment Plan. And as you may know or may not remember off the top of your head, the third year of that plan is the initial window that plan was developed for. So beginning this spring and carrying it to next year, Mr. Cohen and myself will be re-engaging in refreshing our Education for Employment Plan. So I appreciate the support you've given our students and our educators in creating these experiences. And I can't wait for you to talk to the students about what they've learned and what they've done. There's no better examples for what it means to be in these experiences, construction to EDD in terms of Project Lead the Way Engineering Capstone Course, as well as Saber Manufacturing, our very own student-run business. And again, you've been supportive of each and every one of these opportunities. So really allow the students to talk to you, to share with you what they've learned and what they've done, and hear from them what this experience has meant to them, right? And they're giving up, you know, a Wednesday night, which I'm sure they should be doing homework or something else, getting ready, you know. They're not thinking about spring break or anything else. They're here for you, and I cannot wait for you to hear from them. So without anything further, I just, again, thank you for your support of our programming. Thank you for supporting Education for Employment and helping us be part of a better community. And again, we have three groups here. I don't think we have the fourth, right? I don't have any law students hiding back there, I don't think. Correct? So we have students from three opportunities. I would just ask that, you know, and I know, I'm not sure if you really, I don't think we need to do a set time at each one, but I would encourage you to talk to students at each table and listen to them. Let them tell you what they've learned, what they've done. And it's interactive, so feel free to ask them any questions you have, because they love to talk about what they do, which is why they're here. So without anything further, I think you guys can, do you have to make any motions to get up?
No.
I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Bolo. Do we want a timeframe, or just?
Yeah.
I would say probably by 6:30 after 20 minutes. Does that sound about right? We'll check in and see how we're doing.
Okay.
Okay.
That'd be good for a minute.
They're still talking. So if I could have the students' attention, the board would like to thank you for your presentation tonight. It was fantastic. I don't know if anyone has any comments. We want to thank you for coming. You do a great job. You're very articulate about what you do. So does the board, anyone have anything they want to say? Anyone?
It was very informative. Thank you.
Yeah, it was informative, and you just make me feel so proud of all of you.
Yeah, good job.
There were some little gifts for you. I think you got them already. So thank you very much, and now you can go home and do your homework, because you had some, so. Again, thank you for coming.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. And so next on the agenda is item 8B, our pre-nursing dual enrollment academy. Mr. Bolo.
Yep. So as you may recall, that we've already had several dual enrollment academies that we've approved. The only reason we did not bring the pre-nursing dual enrollment academy previously was because it had been offered only at the Mequon Campus of MATC. That was the primary driver. The benefits of this particular dual enrollment academy is the transferability. So in the MOI created, it transfers to any two- or four-year program beyond MATC, whereas what they take in the LPN pathway is really only good at MATC. So if they're completing at MATC, that is fine, but this is for students typically if they're going to any other, you know, nursing program anywhere. So again, looking at that, we would require a CNA to be completed prior to entering the program. That'd be a local requirement, not a MATC requirement, because we do want to see some, I guess, commitment to the program. And our students in CNA, LPN, and we believe in this pathway will have success, and for the most part, you know, our students have. With this dual enrollment academy, the costs would come from the same costs our other dual enrollment academies come from, which is our Act 59 money, and we would cover 18 credits and the associated costs with that for students. Beyond that would be the family responsibility. To date, MATC has had a grant, the first two years we've been doing this, and they've been able to cover the cost of credits beyond 18 credits. But, you know, humbly submitted, I know this is beyond the course, you know, approval pathway, but it's not really a new course. It's allowing us to, again, offer something to our students that we provided opportunity in welding and other areas, protective services. This one meets a fairly high demand, because many of our students who get into a nursing pathway or healthcare pathway see this as very applicable. And again, this applies not just to pre-nursing, but also if they're going to be a physician's assistant, any number of opportunities in the healthcare industry. And with that CNA, there's really nothing they can't do. Any questions?
So this is at MATC and, is it MATC? No, where is this at?
At MATC Oak Creek Campus.
And is it a one-year program then, or?
So this would be their entire senior year. So it's for seniors only, and really, I mean, that's the seriousness of a dual enrollment academy. Most, all the students in those typically are not on campus because of their commitments. So, you know, a student who's in protective services this year is on campus a bit, but otherwise, like Tuesday, you know, Thursday, they'll be doing these courses. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they'll be doing these other courses. Most, all of their requirements are met through MATC, with some rare exception.
And how many students now do we have in all of these academies?
This year, I believe we had 13 as a number. If I'm not mistaken, next year we'll have eight.
And this would be another opportunity, right?
So this, if we approve this, this would be?
Eight slots.
Eight with this total. Like eight across all the dual enrollment academies. Not eight with just this. Eight across all the different welding, protective services.
Eight academies.
Eight total across the different academies, which is a very sustainable number. That's about, you know, like where we want to be.
So you said Tuesday, Thursday on, for these classes, and then Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the other classes, but other classes at the high school? Or are you saying their entire senior year is at, most of it's at MATC?
MATC.
Because if you look, they're taking, you know, 25 credits at MATC. So that's two, you know, full-time semesters. If you look at 12 credits a semester are full-time enrollment. So we will have students still make a thing work here or there, but, you know, especially if they're really, they want something that's second block on A-days, we might not be able to make that work. We try to be as flexible as we can with students, but there really is a commitment to, you want to be at MATC. And we had a student leave the LPN program at semester this year. She was successful. She passed all her courses, got the grade she needed. She just didn't want to do another semester at MATC. There was no cost for us when she left. She came back and re-enrolled in a traditional schedule at Franklin High School, because that's what she decided she wanted to do, and that was okay. This program, if it had existed, probably would have been a better fit for her, but, you know, she had a semester at MATC, missed the high school experience still, and that's okay, you know. And again, like some students say it's really hard to not be in that social world that, you know, the students you just saw, for example, are in eight hours a day, just about every day.
So then they would have met their high school requirements at the end of their junior year then, for Franklin?
Typically, in some cases, like you'll notice, this pathway includes English one and some other ones that, like, there will be, if they need something specific then, then we have to find a way for them to get that. So if they would need a math, English, social studies, or science, so if they're not credit, I guess, on track, especially in terms of the core areas, these are really hard to do. I mean, in fact, we don't really, we wouldn't sign this for a student and allow them the opportunity, because if you look up, they have to be on track, really, to get there, because we can't really facilitate a lot of required courses. So if you're behind in English, it's tough.
So there's an approval process at the administrative level to allow a student to get into that program?
So if they had attendance issues or other issues, the school counselor, school administrator approve it before we sign it as a district.
When do they typically meet the CNA requirement then?
The year before. So typically, they'll do that junior year.
Is it a semester obligation?
We have students do that in summer or fall or spring. We have cohorts in each one.
Oh, that's all, classroom is at Franklin High School?
For CNA, they're at MATC.
Oh, MAT, okay.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve, sorry. The pre-nursing dual enrollment academy as presented by Mr. Bolo.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sprague. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Larson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the 8C, the Academic Excellence Scholarship Recipient Approvals. Mr. Bolo?
All right. So pursuant to the Higher Education AIDS Board and the associated statutes allowing us to award academic excellence scholars, noted here are the designees based on a student's GPA across their time at Franklin High School. So what you'll notice is, per our enrollment, we have four students who would qualify to receive this scholarship. The scholarship, as it has been since, I want to say, 1996 or '97, is still $2,250 per year. That's not changed in 23 years, or 24 years, now that I'm counting. And looking at that, if a student is in the top four, does not enroll in eligible university, then the next students below will take their spot. You'll notice this year, there are no ties. However, in the event of ties, we do look at standardized composite and then number of extracurricular activities at FHS would be the tiebreakers. However, we do not have tiebreakers in this case. So I would humbly ask you to approve these students as our academic excellence scholars.
And so I'm looking for a motion to approve the academic excellence scholarship recipients. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gamble. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Then item D, the Technical Excellence Scholarship Recipient Approvals.
All right. So similar to the academic excellence scholarship, the state is also provided for the Technical Excellence Scholarship, or TES. So in this case, again, we can have four nominees. Notice the monetary value is identical. This does count towards tuition. And you'll notice some of the criteria are a bit different. And what we're looking at here is the number of students who earn credits, right, in career and technical education courses at Franklin High School. You know, we look at those things. They must have a career pathway or a career plan in technical education. And looking at those students, then we have a point-based system with GPA being the tiebreaker. So when we look at this, we have four nominees. And again, similarly, if they will not accept this or not use this, then it would go to the alternates below. So I would again ask that we approve these technical excellence scholars and recognize their hard work.
And I'm looking for a motion to approve the Technical Excellence Scholarship recipients.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Gamble. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then item 8E, Summer Early College Credit and Start College Now Request Approvals.
So the early college credit program allows for summer terms. Start College Now, which would be the tech version, does not. We had one request, and that request came in per statute ahead of the due date. It has a slightly different due date than the fall requests, which are March 1st. The summer request had to be in by February 1st. So we have one such request from one student to take courses that will allow that student to accelerate through EWM. So you'll notice the courses are here. We do not have comparable courses in any of these cases, and we would allow these courses to be taken for high school credit, transferring at .25 high school credits per one college credit. This student also has not reached or exceeded 18 total lifetime credits through either of these programs. So I would ask that we approve the summer requests that we have for early college credit program.
Including the Start College Now?
There's no Start College Now applicants for this.
Okay, it's just in my recommended motion, so. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Summer Early College Credit.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sprague. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Any discussion?
So this wouldn't be a senior, right, or, I mean, a graduating senior?
This would be a, would be going in senior here.
Because a graduating senior would not be eligible.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Bolo.
Thanks, everybody.
Next, item 8F, our Communications, Branding, Presentation, and Board Strategy Number Two. Mr. Kafka.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
Number two. All right, good evening again. Sharing with you about branding and the importance of branding as it relates to district pride tonight. This is in relation specifically to the board goal that you guys have, board goal number two. The board will learn more about the impact of district branding on pride, and will discuss ideas for integration of a branding strategy. So my hope tonight is to share some things that we're currently doing with you, and then also seek some feedback at the end. Two questions I'm going to ask you at the end that I'd like to point to you now. What are other ideas, after you hear the presentation, what are other ideas you have for our current branding strategy? And then number two is in regards to pride. Is there anything you've learned tonight or about our branding that we should address or specifically target? So I will come back to those two questions at the end, again, ideas for our current branding strategy, or anything that you think we should specifically be targeting as it relates to pride. So specifically, I want to go through an article, just not go through the article, but give you some takeaways from that article that I think was sent in the Word Packet last Friday. I want to look at just branding in general and what do popular brands out there evoke from people looking at the brand or recognizing the brand. Talk about some specific Franklin Public Schools branding examples, give you some examples from some other districts, and then do a wrap-up. So I'll try to go as quickly as I can. So, the origin of branding. So branding came about when people, cattle ranchers, would decide to brand their animals with some kind of branding iron, some kind of logo that they would create. That's kind of where the branding term came from. But as we all know, words tend to take on different contexts and different meaning as they evolve. So when we talk about branding specific to a district, to a product, to anything, we don't look specifically at that logo. We look at other things. What is the company's mission that is coming through that brand? What is the, what are the benefits or the features of that product or that service? In our case, a school district. What do the customers and the prospects already think of our company? What are the feelings that are emotive when they see that? And then what qualities are associated with that company or that organization? So even though we tend to think of a brand as a logo, we're going to look at a lot of visuals tonight, but I want to really keep in mind, this is what we hear about Franklin Public Schools. This is what we see about Franklin Public Schools, and we kind of keep that underneath as we look at some of those visuals. So this was the article that I sent to you last Friday, just marketing your school district a thing. Why is that important? Why do we care about that? Some of the big takeaways from this, the things to not associate with branding, first off, that branding isn't just a quick promotional effort. So along with that, a quick campaign or a quick event. It's not just a drop in the water and then we're done and now we're branded and we move on. Some organizations, some companies, some districts might treat it that way. It's not just a logo. It's not just a mascot or just a set of colors. It's kind of all these things working together. And it's not just your social media. It's just not the public-facing persona that you put out through social media, like your Twitter, your Facebook, or your Instagram. Takeaways from the article on what branding is or what branding should focus on is an opportunity to tell the story of the district. So we use some of those means that I just mentioned, social media, the ways that we communicate out to the community as a way to tell our story. We try to gauge what people feel about the district. That is part of our brand. That is kind of the underpinning of the brand. We try to connect to people's feelings and, excuse me, and emotions specifically, and specifically our unique assets, our personality, our work. We're doing a lot of coherence work that you've heard a lot about and that you're learning about as well. A lot of our brand should be kind of coming through that work and be seen in the things that we're putting out as the end product, which might be things like a district logo, a tagline, things that we'll talk about here and then. Last takeaways from the article is that creating a strong identity is what branding is. Again, it's not just that visual, not just that logo. It does help to promote our story, establish a positive image. It helps us to attract more qualified candidates. If we're presenting a strong brand, that helps Valley's job to be easier. When we get applicants, it's a good thing, right? Exactly. We also, as we look to build our alumni network up and connect our alumni with our students, having a strong brand represented in the community or in the area would help with that as well. And it helps to create a sense of ownership by our students or by our staff, that they're proud to work for Franklin Public Schools. So I mentioned proud there. All of this ties back to your goal of how does branding affect pride? If all these things are kind of working in unison, then hopefully we would see the pride in Franklin Public Schools increase. So, little marketing 101 lesson here. So some popular brands out there, I'm going to ask for some audience participation here. When you see a logo, what does that logo evoke from you? So this logo, what do you think about, my favorites would chime in or shout out, what do you think about? What does this feeling evoke for you when you see the Disney logo?
Happiness, Mickey Mouse.
Okay, happiness, Mickey Mouse, warm comforts, yeah, nostalgia.
Theme park.
What's that?
Theme park.
Theme park, spending all your money. Right? That is something that the Disney brand does evoke for people. It's different for everyone.
Imagination.
Imagination, definitely. You guys have the big ones. Dreams, imagination, happy, warm, comforting, nostalgia. Those were some that I found through some marketing research. This brand, what does this evoke, or what do you think about when you see this symbol?
Well, sports apparel.
Sports apparel.
Just do it.
Just do it. Yeah, that's their tagline, right? They're three words. I was hoping somebody was going to say that. Thank you.
I'm sure that was the right part.
Yeah, having those key tagline words out there, that is very strong for the Nike brand.
Tiger Woods.
Tiger Woods, right? Something going on there. Right, athletes that you see promoting the brand. Innovative technology, high quality, stylish products, sports performance, self-empowerment. Those are other things that the Nike symbol has come to mean to people over time. IKEA, what do you think about?
Getting lost.
Yeah, it's lost. Very true, very true. Anything else with IKEA? Are there type of products that they offer to you as a customer?
I think about putting furniture.
I think about putting furniture together.
Putting furniture together, easy or hard?
It depends.
Depends, okay. So IKEA is about being cost conscious. Simplicity and togetherness is their focus, and so they try, you know, if you think about their manuals, if you've ever had to look at them, there's never any words in there because they're catering to people from all different backgrounds, all different styles of language, so they try to, they try to really focus on that simplicity and that togetherness and also trying to be approachable with their visual design. And the last one here, that's, what does that represent?
Hydration, I guess.
Hydration, yeah, thirst, right? Healthy, fueling.
Gatorade.
Working out, right, being health conscious, energy, unique, those kinds of things. Now, what do you notice about all these logos up here that I specifically put on the screen? There's no color in them, right? So we didn't even, I didn't even put a logo up here yet that has to do with color, so let me throw a few of these back up there. And specifically, now let's talk about the color of the logo. What is the color of this Walt Disney Pictures evoke? What do you think about because of the blue and the white? Does anything come to mind?
I think of all the Walt Disney kids movies.
Right, kids movies, so again, back to nostalgia, they're using that as their symbol.
Blue sky.
What does the blue mean to you? Get the footprints to it. Dreams, night sky, stars, the castle evoking.
Fireworks over the castle.
Right, fireworks over the castle. I mean, this logo has evolved over time. Now, when we go to a movie that's a Walt Disney movie, we see the actual full 3D animation and the cameras pulling back and they've really evolved that over time, but that's what they were going for with this, was the blue. Blues, blue tends to be a comfort color. Water, we typically associate with blue, and so that is, that just kind of goes together with what they were going for. I'll go through these next ones quickly. Gatorade, the green coloring of the logo represents life, vitality, ambition, the orange. Orange is typically a color that is associated with hunger. That's why you typically see the inside of a Burger King or the inside of a Denny's, like they use, they use orange as part of their, like their seats and their motif on the inside. The red is used to represent action for Gatorade. Nike uses all different colors now with their swoosh. Specifically, they were using red for a while and that was to exemplify passion, energy, and joy, and the white was to stand for nobility, charm, and purity of the Nike brand. And then the last one we looked at was IKEA. They were going for, with the blue color symbolizing trust and excellence, where the yellow color was more happiness, imagination, and energy. So think about all of that behind just looking at a logo. And then, and then we'll apply that back to what it means for Franklin and our brand to go here. So examples of Franklin branding and the strategy that I've been working on since taking on this role in October. Before I get to these assets, I want to throw this up here. So specifically, while we're talking about this tonight, from my lens is as the part of the communications plan, this is one of our external goals for external communication, and specifically this one highlighted right here, is are we consistently using our branding assets? And are we making sure that we're putting forth a consistent image and a consistent brand to the community? So that's part of my tie-in with your goal as well. So the foundation for what our brand means to the public has to stem from our mission and our vision as our, as our foundation. So key words that are in our mission that we're going to talk about again in a little bit here is inspiring personal success. Mission says inspiring personal success through learning, experiences that focus our student needs, and active partnerships with family and community. The vision talks about Franklin Public Schools being committed to excellence and student achievement and continuous improvement. So that's the foundation, and now we can talk about how we portray that out to the community. So we have our district logo, the shield as we'll call it, as most people call it when they see it. I think this was six years ago maybe, six or seven years ago now that we've had the shield logo, was designed to represent a little bit about our, a little bit from our high school mascot logo with the saber. So the middle white part is meant to represent the tooth. The bold font, the choice of font is kind of a, kind of an athletic looking block format. That's, that's our logo that we put out on all of our letterhead, it's on our district website, that's for our district as a whole. The inspiring personal success has to do with our tagline. So when we talk about a tagline, which actually I'll come back to tagline here in a second, or I'll go right now, actually. When we define what a tagline is, there's only one obvious example that we can't think of when we think of a good example for a tagline, and that is one call, that's all, right? Because that specific tagline gets stuck in your head, you know it, you know that if you were to make that call, that would be all you would have to do in a situation, right? So, so tagline is meant to be that. A tagline is meant to be some set of words, usually three, maybe four at the most, that has to do with your intended audience. So in our case, our audience is our students. What is the deliverable for our students? We are hoping to inspire personal success within our students. So that's part of our brand. So I just, I bring that to your attention just to kind of have you be aware of that. We look at our district key messaging. So through our coherence plan work, these three phrases, better place to learn, better place to work, part of a better community, these represent how we are doing our work. Structurally, this is how we are planning for our students, planning for our staff, planning for our involvement within the community. So you've seen these more recently, the animated graphic on the right side. If you've watched any of the videos we've been putting out recently, I created that as a way to just brand those videos, so when we're going to tell a story about what's going on at Franklin Public Schools, that's front and foremost in people's minds as they enter that story. With our key messages, there's been specific consistency to them when I'm posting to social media this year. A little hard to see, I'll try to put these out here. So hashtags are meant to give context to a social media post. So whenever we're doing, whenever I'm doing a post on social media, I'm specifically trying to tag it if I can, if enough characters will fit. Sometimes I have to like go over the tag in order to get the context of the message. But I'll specifically put, if the post has to do with better community, or us being a better place to learn, I think this one was hard to see, but it's better place to learn, better community. So just specifically putting that out in the vernacular so that people see that as a commonality when we're sharing the stories about our districts. Our core values, so these logos were designed last year, these have been more of an internal focus, we haven't really used them much for external marketing, we use them, we've used them here and there, I think we used them in an opening doors issue out to the city earlier this year. But specifically, we tie back to our core values that we worked on internally, so an example screenshot from one of our Franklin Pine staff newsletters. We specifically put an impact story in the staff newsletter that goes out to staff and we specifically tie it back to one of the core values, just to keep that at the forefront of why we're doing what we do, because we care about these five things and these are our core values that we believe in. These are some screenshots from kind of our branding guide when this logo was created six years ago, the color schemes that we use. So the Vegas gold is the, is the official color of the gold up here. If we ever do anything in print, if we do spot color, which is just a one color option, if we do a grayscale, if we are doing anything on the web, we adhere to those colors so that our color scheme is the same throughout. And again, this is just for the district logo, the fonts that we use for the district logo, I already mentioned that, so I'll move on. A specific focus this year, when I was starting this role, I talked with Brad Anderson a lot about how can we make it more clear that the community and the rec department is branded under Franklin Public Schools? And so one of the ways we did that was we took their gold logo, which this is athletic gold or Packer gold, if you want to think of it that way, and we just redefined that a little bit to use the Vegas gold color, and then specifically underneath the logo, we're putting this under there, a proud part of Franklin Public Schools. We're planning to use this under different departments that we use, so, that we, that we have, so that people see that this all goes together, this is all part of Franklin Public Schools. You guys get a little sneak preview of one of the things we've been working on. The summer rec guide, so this is the front and back of the summer rec guide, it's not printed yet, it's going to be printed soon. We worked on this over the last few weeks, specifically to tie better in that the rec department is part of Franklin Public Schools. So this was helped, this, we were helped with this by graphic designer, specifically worked with Brad and his staff to find out what is the most popular programming that we see in the summer, specifically kids camp or kids activities, that's why we put this front and center, adult programming, spin classes, elderly programming, yoga and such, younger kid classes, cookie baking, so we pulled stock photos for that to make a better tie to what our popular programming is. The gold colors up in here, we tried to go with sun, summer, that kind of theme. We originally were starting with using our Vegas gold, but it's a very muted gold that it really didn't pop like the summer gold would. But we did try to tie in a little bit of our Vegas gold in these waves. And then this will carry on to the back, the blue is going to be the print that is inside the booklet, so if you picture opening one of our rec guides, it'll be a white paper and then all the print will be blue. So we thought this would all just go together really well and kind of rebrand the rec guide as a Franklin Public School, as part of the public school brand. The other thing we're going to do is throughout the guide at the bottom, it seems like a simple and a little thing, but the footers on each page used to say just Franklin Community and Rec Department, the, the programming term, in this case, summer, and then the, the district website where people could go to sign up. We're specifically going to put the proud part of Franklin Public Schools in there as well, just to better brand this. Dr. Miller and I are going to work on a letter that's going to go on the inside cover showcasing some pride points about the district. We're also going to put in some of the pride points about the district that we collected through the community engagement survey, just so that this is all better branded to showcase the work that we're doing. School branding, when we take a look at our schools and how they brand themselves, these are, this is just some examples, I'm not going to talk through all of them, but essentially all of our schools are a cat of some kind. Ben Franklin is working on what their mascot is going to be, that's kind of in the works right now. Some of the schools are using an athletic gold color or possibly the saber gold color. This is kind of, this is all over. The school has, has in the past had choice to choose what this should be. So they've chosen their colors, we've tried to brand everything, it's hard to see here, but with the Franklin logo at least in the teacher website banner, just to kind of tie this all back together. Other examples of the other schools, Forest Park Middle School, the high school with our Vegas gold saber, different variations of the saber, where it's been used with a capital F with a shield, this is in the commons area of the high school with kind of a wave on it that says, or a little ribbon that says Franklin on it. Other areas that we've created visuals for, the Saber Center, rec department as we mentioned, Saber Business Alliance, and the foundation. So this is just kind of putting this all in front of you so you can kind of see how everything looks as a whole district package. So now, other examples from other districts, we're going to pop quiz this one a little bit. I'm going to put something up there and tell me if you can tell me what district this came from.
Mesquite.
I heard it over here. What was it?
Mesquite.
Mesquite, so this is Mesquite's district logo. What is that, what is? And this is not to rip on Mesquite, I live in Mesquite, my kids live in Mesquite Schools.
It's a wave.
A wave?
It's a wave. So what this is, is this is, this is, so I got this from their communications person. The seven waves represent all six of our schools and the administration building, with the waves being symbolic of water since we have so many lakes in Mesquite. So that was their thought with doing that as a district logo. How they've incorporated kind of a, a theme across their schools, here I'll put them all up. So we're typically, we typically see the high school logo, right? We typically see the M with the spear for, because their warrior is their mascot. So this, I see everywhere I go. I went into Jimmy John's the other day to get a sandwich and the kids wore a baseball cap with this on. That, that is out there, that tells me, the M tells me Mesquite more than their district logo does. They made a conscious effort over the last year or two when they were moving and shuffling around some of their schools. When you go to any of their website pages, the name of the school is all the same font, all the same look. Most of their schools are red, white, and black, so you'll see their mascot next to that. There's one school, one of their middle schools is blue and white, which the communications person is like, that just eats at my crop. But, but for the most part, red, white, and black are their thematic colors throughout. Hopefully she doesn't watch this video of this work presentation. This one, which one is this?
Greenfield?
Greenfield?
Greenfield, you are correct, yes, Greenfield. It was either Greenfield or Greendale, right? You had fifty shots there.
I went to Greendale.
You went to Greendale, so you know it. So Greenfield specifically with their logo, they have the big capital G, and because they're high school and they're middle school, they both did the Hawks, it's just a different, it's just a reverse color variation of what they did here. They have the eagle wings kind of in there because most people in a district probably recognize the high school as the mascot like we do as the Sabers. So pretty creative with what they did there. If I throw out the other ones that they did, so these are some of their elementary buildings, so clean logos, they all have a different mascot, different color schemes, this is a, maybe blue and a gold, this is an orange and a black, this I wasn't sure what their color scheme was, it's a, there's a brown in there, they're the, they're Dale Eagles, and this is a dark green. So they have different color schemes, and it's not to say a district has to be all one color scheme or not, it's just, just showing you different options here as we talk about how we can affect pride. What is this one?
Arrowhead.
It is Arrowhead, yes. I figured you guys would get that. Their tagline, tradition of excellence, very simple, three words. The thing that I was impressed with when I was looking more into Arrowhead, because I honestly don't know Arrowhead very well, I know they're very big, very popular around here. The thing that I noticed was, this logo, the A and this one team is throughout all of their webpages, all their materials. I know their mascot is the Warhawk, there isn't like a giant Warhawk on things, it's just the big A. So they chose to specifically rally around that A and rally around being one team. This is the, this is part of their vision statement and planning that's on their website, and so I mean, just using that A, that bold A everywhere, and it was consistent throughout. The consistency, I think, is really what brings people into a good branding strategy when you see the same thing. And this one, Hamilton, they had all different ones, they chose Hamilton, very high performing district, but in terms of just imagery, I got different things. This is on the main website, this was buried on another page of their site, this was their high school, I think it actually was on their athletics page, and so they, they chose to put in their keywords or key messages there about what they were focusing on, their tagline of where character matters, and then all different mascots, all different color schemes for their other schools. So I just show that as examples of what are out there, happy to come back to you later with other examples if we decide to have a discussion about, about what we can do or where we should, what we should do. So ultimately, I bring you back to what this all should be centered around is when we look at branding, how is this ultimately affecting pride? These are those takeaways from that article that I asked you to read. So now, I'd like to go into the two questions, just have a very short discussion. So the first question for you is, what are other ideas, or what other ideas do you have for our current branding strategy? Anything that you're thinking of that we're not thinking of that this brings to your thought process?
Whenever I think of branding, and I always think of the Wisconsin script W.
Sure.
You know, in, Franklin's is just the block F, which is just kind of run-of-the-mill in my mind.
Sure.
And, you know, that, that's one thing that could possibly be looked at.
Sure, meaning you like the F or you don't like the F?
No, I mean, it's Franklin, so you have to have an F. But whether it's just that block F or some variation of that somehow, maybe it's the block F with something around it, you know, like the Arrowhead was very unique.
Right.
Just something like that, that, again, and that's, that's pride factor for the kids when they wear it, if everybody would wear something that's a little bit more unique than just an F.
Sure, yeah, I think that's good. Any other thoughts?
I think when you go back to what Arrowhead did, they had one symbol that carried through everything. And what I've done in business, I had was keep that symbology consistent because that's what ends up resonating with people.
Sure.
And that's what makes Bucky Badger and the Wisconsin W so iconic, is that is the symbol for Madison.
Sure. Anything else? I have a second question, a last question here. In regards to pride, is there anything you've learned tonight or about our branding that we should address for specific departments? So again, just to make you aware of the branding that we currently do, and to get your feedback on if there's anything that relates to pride that we should be addressing.
Obviously, like the work that's going on with the rec department and getting that message out there that is part of the, part of the schools, I'm wondering if maybe, maybe you have this somewhere on the website or maybe you're thinking about putting that in the book, but keep coming back with that to remind them of it, and do like a did you know thing.
Yeah.
Every, every now and again, they see some, a did you know, and throw another factoid out there or another tie-in from the rec department to the district.
Yeah. Brad and I have actually talked about that, that's a great idea. So one of the, one of the ways we hope to do that, we're not going to have it ready for this booklet, but for the next booklet, is when we do some of the programming, try to get some pictures, the printer that currently prints it just throws in random clip art that he's able to find. So, so finding pictures and collecting pictures are my role, that would tie to that programming, but then also interspersing a did you know that we use this much of our facility space for this program, or just things that make it so that it seems like a more cohesive unit with the district.
But you could throw that out, I mean, at any random moment, when you're, just in a, in a Facebook post, you could throw that out, and any of your social media stuff, it doesn't have to be all the time, but.
Right.
If there's on a regular basis with different nuggets, then they're going to keep seeing that.
Right, right. Good feedback.
When I was meeting with Brad, one of the things that I was surprised about is the numbers of people.
Yeah.
That the rec department touches. numbers of people that the Rec Department touches. So the nugget idea would be, you know, did you know we service, you know, this many thousands of people in Franklin through the Rec Department, or something like that.
Exactly. That's one of the pride points we plan to put on the inside cover. I think, I don't know if the infographic was shared with you, we did an infographic recently that we use for when we did a senior breakfast in the area, and we're planning to repurpose that a little bit, and just talk about how many community programs we put on, how many number of people we serve, and that, yeah, I think that would hit people in a negative way.
Well, I'm going to take it to that point further. It would be, you know that as a, as a part of Franklin Public Schools, we serviced whatever, you know, so you'll always have that.
Yeah, yeah, there you go, that's a good point, you have a vernacular, a little vernacular. Anything else?
Because then when people get, you know, a lot of it comes down, it comes down to money. They get their tax block taken of the year, and then like, we've had discussions here, you got the, the city saying blame them, and talking about us, and it's like, but then if they see all these tie-ins, they're going to make a way, but there's a value there though.
Right.
So.
About showcasing that value that we've got. Always open to your feedback, if you think of anything after this, please let us know, let Dr. Miller know, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Very good.
Thanks, Chad. Okay. Next, we have item 8G, our 2021 preliminary budget assumptions. Mr. Millsor?
Yes, it's the time of year when we start planning for next year's budget. So I have the budget assumptions here that we're starting with, just to let you know what they are. At this time of the year, most of the factors are estimated, because it's really so early in the process. But the first one is enrollment, which is the main factor in our revenue limit calculation, and we're looking at resident student numbers increasing by about 10 students, and we did open 68 open enrollment seats, keeping open enrollment about even with that number. The Consumer Price Index is used by the state, it applies to represented employee negotiations starting in July, and that's an increase of 1.81 percent. In the area of state aid and the revenue limit, the district's equalized value grew by 7.92 percent last year, which was higher than the state average of 5.56. And in the equalization aid formula, that would make the district appear richer than other communities, which would mean generally the state would give us less aid than we would otherwise get. However, in the state budget, they increased equalization aid funding by 3.5 percent, so that should help mitigate that aid reduction. Also with the state budget, they increased the per student revenue limit amount by $179 per student, or about 1.5 percent, while the pupil aid, per, per pupil aid remained unchanged. And then in special education funding, they increased the reimbursement from 26 percent to 30 percent, which would bring us probably another $300,000 or so. In transportation, our consortium that we created has held down costs. However, they're in a time where their prices are, are locked in for us for another two years, but they're paying more and more for wages to get bus drivers. They're up to $19.50 an hour for a starting bus driver. They give a $1,500 signing bonus and paid training. So if you are looking for something else to do during the day, they, they would love to have you. Retirees, we have five teachers retiring at the end of the year, which is slightly less than average. The next item is a long-term capital improvement trust fund item. I bring this up now because it's something we need to get moving on, so if it's something that the, the board doesn't want to see happen, now would be the time to bring it up. The Pleasant View office is in the middle of the building, it's the only building we have that's like that, and we made changes over the years to create the system that we have at other buildings as best we could, with cameras, direct line right to the office, and having people come in there, and they've really been fine with that over the years. It wasn't at the top of our list, because they said it's working. We've got this, and then they had an issue, and they felt that it wasn't as safe as they thought, that maybe someone, you know, could try and sneak through, and so they said, "We really want this fixed sooner than later," and because it's a, it's a large safety issue, we want to fix it right away. So it's a, it's about a $1.6 million project. It would take about six or seven months, because an office would have to be built in the front of the school. If you can picture the school, we're thinking it would go between the gym and the, the main building there, which is where you'd kind of expect it to be, and it would be a, a visual that you could go to that. Probably takes over a classroom there, and then we pick up a classroom in the back of the building, the office becomes the staff workroom, and there's a little bit of work with restrooms in there. So one, one thing has to be done before we can start on the next thing, and it's kind of a domino effect. So it takes a little longer than you would think just from the size of the project. We started talking to the architects and construction managers about that, and they think we could get started July 1, if we continue on right now and keep working on it. In June, we'll make another deposit into our long-term trust fund, $3 million, two and a half, somewhere in there, so certainly well in excess of $1.6 million, so we would be able to afford this. So unless the board disagrees with going ahead with this project, we'll continue planning with that, and it'll come back to you as part of the budget in Fund 46 as a project for next year.
Tell that we had that waiting period. Any monies that you put into that fund are able to be used right away?
Yes. There was only one waiting period of five years.
The initial one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
This is in addition to the other planned projects?
The other planned projects for buildings and grounds, yes.
Which is about nine bucks?
Right.
How much new space have we added, square foot plan?
To Pleasant View?
Right, for this project.
Um, I don't know, we're not that far in the planning yet, but it's probably not too much, a couple thousand maybe? The offices, we're looking to make it about the size of the other offices at the elementaries, and to work about the same way, so that you come in the door, you have to go into the office, you're stuck in the office until they let you go. So it'll be about that size, and part of it'll be interior to the building, and part of it will be out, kind of where the sidewalk is now.
Is there a reason why you can't fit it within the footprint?
We don't have enough room.
Right, not enough room.
Yeah, there's hallways, right, a major hallway right behind there. But there's a really large piece of sidewalk there, and it's bordered by the gym on one side, so it's a, it's really a perfect place to put it, given that we're doing it after the building was built.
Is there any parking impacts?
The parking will all remain. What we'll have to look at is which way the traffic flows in front of the building. If anything, there'll be more parking near the front office than there is now, because it's, the entrance to the front office is way down on the end of the building.
So when you say you can't fit it into the current footprint, and I'm, and I'm not saying I'm against this or anything, but where the office currently is, and you go into Pleasant View, so you have the hall that goes straight across in front of it, was there any consideration, and, and I know, I know this would be a little odd, but it, so if you take Countrydale, you walk right in, and the office is right on the left, or Southwood Glen, and it's one main entrance, was there any consideration to putting the office at Pleasant View, just extending it straight forward to the front, and then it would block off the hallway, but it would be just like the other schools? I mean, it would be a little inconvenient to go around, but...
We looked at something close to that. We looked at putting it in the classrooms that are just to the left of the doorway there, and taking up, but it would take two classrooms, and then we wouldn't be getting two classrooms back, so we'd be down a classroom in the building, and we'd lower our capacity in the building. So, and it's still right on the end of the building, so it's, it's really the wrong place for a main entrance there. Moving it to the center, we don't have to add too much to it, we keep all the classroom space. There's more parking there, and it's, it's that visual right in front of you as you come to it, and it's where you'd expect the office to be.
And it's right where that exit currently is?
Mm-hmm.
In Pleasant View, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Okay.
Well, is there, is there opposition to this by anyone? Because that's what you're looking for, to move ahead with it in the budget.
But the, the trigger was this event.
It was, yes.
I mean, I guess it perplexes me that we...
What happened in the event?
It was just a parent that tried to, they, maybe they didn't have time to stop at the office and wanted to give their child something, so they tried to just go quickly past the office after being buzzed in, and so they had to come out of the office and say, "No, no, 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 you got to come through the office and go in this way." So it wasn't, it wasn't a huge safety issue, but it showed them that someone, even a parent, could try and do that to get by them if they weren't paying attention constantly with these. So it was, they didn't get anywhere, they did come through the office, and they went how they were supposed to, but I think they found it unnerving that that could happen, and they wanted to have the people come right into the office.
Yeah, when you come into the office, you're in a secured area. That's not true at Pleasant View. When you're buzzed in, you're not in a secured area. You can go anywhere quickly. But when you come in our other schools, you're in a secured area.
And this is something you've had on the radar anyhow. We've talked about it, so it's just, let's do it now rather than later, basically is what we're saying.
Right.
Any other questions?
The only other thing I'd mention is, in the benefits area, that we did recently bid out the health, dental, and vision insurance, and we'll be switching from Humana to United Healthcare. The health and dental insurance rates declined 5.6 percent, while the vision rates declined 5.9 percent. And those are our budget assumptions for this year.
And you'll, you'll be back again in, is it May or?
I'll be back in June with the budget, and May we'll be back with the staffing.
Okay. Thank you. And next is 8H, our technology update by Ms. Alansky. Welcome.
Tonight's update will be without technology, how's that? A little change of pace for you. So you should have in your Word docs, like a one-page graphic, if you will, so I thought for tonight's purposes of giving you an, an update of some of the things that we're working on this year, to keep it kind of simple and, and easy to read and, and such. So as you, as you remember, in, in my role, we really kind of break things into three areas, one being the instructional technology, things happening in the classroom, and how technology supports kids. The second area in the middle is around information technology, so the technical, I call it stuff behind the scenes, and things that we're working on there. And I also oversee the library media, which has been part of our technology piece, so that's the third area that you see on that document. So just to give you a little, a little bit on each area, and some of the things we're focusing on this year to update you on. So the first, under instructional technology, one of the things has always been technology integration, so working with teachers and helping them use technology in the classroom. With the move from Chad moving into the communications role and hiring John Brandis as Chad's replacement in that role, as well as Manny Adams are the two individuals who helped support teachers in the classroom on technology integration, it gave us an opportunity to take a step back and redefine that role a little bit, about where we wanted to head and what that could look like. And so one of those changes that they're focusing on is working in, with the instructional technology, or teaching and learning, I should say, department, sitting in on curriculum review teams, so that they can better see and understand where we're heading from a content standpoint. And we'll also be looking at those information technology literacy standards, and how those can be embedded in science, math, social studies, et cetera, instead of in isolation. So them having time to be a part of those conversations from the ground floor up will help us make those connections in a more natural way as we make those integrations happen. So that is just one area that we are focusing on. There will be, also be some curriculum-related software as a result of that, I know for sure, coming out in science, where they've identified some materials that they're going to be looking to, that they're piloting currently, that has some technology components to them, that we'll be looking at integrating as well, and helping teachers and supporting them as they roll that curriculum out into the future here. So those are just like some examples of some ways that we're connecting those instructional pieces with technology. We are always looking and helping and supporting teachers with different technology, I call them efficiencies. If we can use a different or better way to save them time, make things more efficient, get more information at their teacher's fingertips, as it relates to Google Classroom or the Grivewalk, always making those improvements and looking for those opportunities. We have a few staff members who will be going to the Midwest Google Summit, coming, it's coming up Monday, Tuesday. We'll be bringing back some ideas, as well as how we can better improve some of those efficiency areas. And lastly, under that, I, I call it universal tools. I feel like the Chromebook is that universal tool that we provide students with, to give them access to information and resources at their fingertips. But in addition to that, looking to, we do have a specific person who's in charge of assistive technologies for some of our special needs populations. But what I, what I'm listing here as assistive apps and extensions are those tools that may benefit all students, that we may see sometimes more primarily used in a special education, with a special education student. So a student needs a Boral machine, or needs something very specific, but I'm talking about more universal tools like on-screen readers, things that might help word prediction for students that have struggles with spelling, those kinds of things. So looking for those tools that we can help better train up teachers to know that these tools are the tool about that maybe when they see a student struggling, that aren't really necessarily in a special education programming, or I have an IP that specifies something specific, but there may be some tools that can help them, just use that technology differently to support what they need for their own, for their individual Information technology, it's been an interesting year, as you've seen a lot of things in the news around cybersecurity, phishing attempts, hacking, identity theft, all of those pieces. A lot of time we've been spending as an IT team this year, talking about making sure and kind of, I guess you're never for sure, do, making sure that we have things in place to try to minimize any risks for those things happening potentially in our district. So combination of minimizing those risks, including educating teachers around, don't click on certain links. I know some of you have shared some of the things, some of the emails that you've received that are not legitimate, and what do we do with them. Some of the biggest ways that hackers are getting into systems is not through firewalls and the hardware and the technical things anymore, it's through social engineering. It's through making you believe, preying on the human instinct to click on things, to give them information, to respond to that phone call, those types of things. And so, training up our employees a little bit around those pieces, as well as, you know, what would we do if a situation occurred? What does that look like? And if you've been watching the news, I was, saw about a month ago, the city of Racine got hit with a ransomware attack, so somebody clicked on a link, locked up their machine, they wanted ransomware money, basically. They won't unlock your machine until you give them money in the form of Bitcoins, which is the hacker's way, monetary way of getting money, and so they have, I think, were out for two to three weeks without any technology. So back to police cars writing hand tickets, like, et cetera, so think about that. I don't know if they ended up having to pay the ransom, if they had good backups, that they could back things up, but it's, it's a huge business right now of what we're seeing, so just planning for those things. So that's a, been a big part of it. And kind of related to that, student data privacy, so making sure our student data, our staff data, any of that doesn't get compromised as best as we can to keep those systems secure. And then what happens in the case if it does, right? That disaster recovery, what does that look like? How can we continue to pay people in payroll? But in, from an IT system, you know, can we still make phone calls? Can we still operate as a, as a business, and, and kids can still learn on a day-to-day basis if something of our systems would go down, so to speak. So just again, we're at beginning stages of things that we've always kind of done, but I think with the heightened awareness of everything happening in the world, just a more heightened awareness for us as well to have some different plans in place to make sure that we're prepared if anything were to happen. Hopefully it won't happen. The second piece of our team is our IT improvement team, that which includes those technology integrators, Jill Polkley's as our library media system specialist, and my IT guy team. And we're looking, we've done really three things in terms of goals over the last two years. Last year, we focused on developing a knowledge base as a place for teachers and staff to go to get answers to their technology questions as they need it, so they'll have to guides, resources, those types of things that they could try to help themselves in, in terms of solving their own technology problems, and then when that, either resource isn't available, or it's beyond that, then obviously there's Help Us tickets that we support them with. So just building that. We used to have kind of two separate things, we had the break-it-fix-it stuff here, and, and the pad. We used to have kind of two separate things. We had the break it fix it stuff here and, and the, you know, John and Mandy created all these how-tos and Chad. All these things are how to help teachers over here. And so kind of really merging that together into one system. So of a one place stop and shop for staff to have access to those resources. Um, this year we've, are focusing on, um, gathering some data to take a look at our data around Chromebook repairs and the number of Chromebook repairs. Uh, we are identified that about one in four, one in three Chromebooks that come in for repair each week, um, we think could be avoidable. So it's the cracked screens, it's the drops, it's the spills, it's the, those types of things that, yes, accidents happen. But we feel like that is an area that we could potentially, um, get better at. And so we're looking at that and we're in the process of gathering that data and looking for some things that we can put in place to potentially help, um, reduce the number of repairs that come in on a week-by-week basis. And the last thing we're working on is around customer service. This is something that's part of the coherence plan and, and some of the operations teaming, looking for just feedback on customer service. So we just started implementing every time a HelpDust ticket gets closed, um, our constituents, our customers get a chance to give us some feedback about how we're doing for customer service. As it relates to the resolution of their HelpDust tickets. So that, we're just starting, um, I think we've got about maybe fifty or sixty responses so far. But as we gather that data, we'll use that information to make any changes and improvements if there is a need to do so. And the last area is library media. Um, just to share a few, couple of highlights of the Jill Polglaze's work and some of the work that we're doing. Jill does a really great job of connecting both internally and our, with our staff and, and the bigger picture as well as out in the public library community. Uh, one of the things that she's been working on is developing some social issues and equity book lists. As we've been learning all about equity, there's been some interest and need and requests for a professional library for teachers to read some books and, as well as some students who want some picture books. That key teachers want to use in the classroom as it relates to that topic. So that's something that she's been working on. Um, she's also, um, interesting, getting a lot of requests. There's a, she changed up the system to allow students through our software to be able to request books that they're interested in reading. So new books that come out that maybe we don't have in our libraries currently. She, uh, teacher, or sorry, students can put those requests in. She does a lot of requests from the high school students. And she can, she's got a partnership with Barnes and Noble and some other local places that she can pretty quickly turn around, go back, pick those books up and get those out to kids in a timely manner. And it's really working well and kids are reading. So that's what we, you know, we want them to be doing. And, and lastly, just our, our partnership with the public library, she sits on the board and she also meets with them on a regular basis. Just sharing kind of that back and forth, what we're doing in the school district, what they're doing in the public library and making those connections so that we have continuity and supporting each other. So things as simple as, these are some programming things happening in the public library that we'll publish into our school newsletters, et cetera. So, um, that's been a real great partnership. Um, the public library has indicated, they can't say one hundred percent sure, but their programming numbers have gone up. And they, they attribute it to our partnership and that things are being, um, that are being advertised and shared with students in the district. Are taking advantage of those programming opportunities at the public library.
Any questions? With the cybersecurity and the training of employees, it currently, is that done right now, um, with technology? Or do you have in-person training?
We haven't done any in-person training. So I developed a few modules two, three years ago that we, as part of our, um, it's from Franklin Line Communication. It's been more of a reminder, if you haven't watched these, go back and watch these. These are things to look for, that type of thing. Um, that is something probably, we'll probably be looking at doing more of some place differently. I can tell you some districts, we haven't gone here yet. There's tools out there that you can, they call them a phishing campaign, if you've ever had any of your.
Have you done any of those tests?
Uh, we have not. So a phishing campaign is basically software that puts a fake situation out there to see how many people click to get that click right. To see, and then your, the goal is to train and continue to train to get that click right down. Um, for saying some of the biggest, um, issues that are coming is really because of that social engineering. It's most of the, it's coming from those clickings. And so trying to get people to read critically, look at messaging, make sure that it is real. And they're getting really smart. I mean, it's getting to be really, really, um, impressive, the creativity.
Sometimes they use actual company logos, right? To make it look like it's coming from that company.
Yes, yes.
I'm always in trouble with Chase Bank.
And wiring money. I just, if you just saw the article two days ago, West Alice, West Milwaukee School District. But they, yeah, were requested to change a bank account number and eight hundred thousand dollars went somewhere.
Three hundred and eighty, what was it? Three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, something like that.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred and thirty-three. Excuse me, eight hundred, that's right, eight hundred.
So those are the kinds of things that, as we talk about planning and preparing is, you know, ensuring that we have all the proper controls in place and other things to try to best, you know, minimize. Um, that was a financial transfer, but could be locking up the machines like we're seeing. It's, it's just happening out there. We just have to be more on our toes more than ever.
So I mean, how much email traffic to, do teachers get in a day? It's coming from parents, I would guess. I mean, they're not getting bank, that's Jim, but.
You know.
What is that like?
Yes and no. I, I can tell you the second thing, um, class that I've been doing, the second hit that the insurance companies are saying that have cybersecurity insurance is, um, back to their, preying on staff to get them to give their, um, changing their bank routing number for paychecks. So then they're losing their pay, you're like, why didn't I get my paycheck? Well, you asked for this routing to be changed and, and such. So it's, it's everywhere. It's all kinds of things. Um, you would think there's nothing. And I guess the bigger piece is securing our network internally from an infrastructure standpoint. Because if that gets locked up and that starts traveling across machines, sure, we could re-image them. Things are going to get lost on those machines. We, um, you have to talk about, um, what does that look like? And would we ever as a district pay Bitcoin money to, to get a machine unlocked, right? I mean, that could happen.
Did that give you pause, Jim, when you heard that about, I mean, how could a system, how could something like that come over in an email to ask somebody to change a routing number and account number on an eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollar payment? Now one person will be in charge of that, assuming that gets to the core of systems and we have more than one person involved in that, right?
Uh, we do and you've, over the years, we've had some, some phishing schemes come through. Uh, so one of the things that we do is that, um, we have to be able to call back a known phone number that we have for that company and ask the question, did you, did you do this? Um, or we're not going to change it. And that stops that one.
Right. I had a question regarding the repairs. One in three, one in four Chromebooks coming back, um, seems a little high. Um, is that something that has, have those numbers been trending in that direction? Or is that something like they happen all of a sudden? Have they always been that? Now you're just trying to figure out how to get it down? Or that just seems really high.
Uh, I would say it's, those were the numbers over the last three years that I went back and looked. I don't, they haven't changed.
Oh, that's what they were running.
Now, you're saying that one in three Chromebooks is a, that come back is preventable?
I'm, right, we're not saying one in three Chromebooks need to be fixed. I'm saying that of the ones that come in per week.
That's much better.
If we get, sorry, if we get thirty, forty.
I was very confused.
Sorry. Yes, thank you for clarifying. But yes, no, it's of the ones that come through, of four to a third could be prevented.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, we're not, we don't have that many numbers.
Okay, good.
That would be concerning, even more so.
Chromebooks are actually pretty reliable.
Yeah, you seem pretty calm with that number. That's why I was, wow.
Well, it is preventable though, that is.
Right. The other question I wanted to ask you, and I'm really glad this is on the agenda tonight, was, um, you know, our buildings, our public buildings after school hours, essentially. There's a lot of stuff that goes on, community engagement, uh, programming and stuff. Why is it that we can't have Wi-Fi available when the public is in these buildings? I've heard countless comments about the frustration level with us being in a building that taxpayers are paying for. It's a public building, but the Wi-Fi is locked down. Is there anything we can do about providing that?
At two-thirty every day, there should be a public Wi-Fi available and there is no password needed to get on it. So.
Is that, is that something that happened recently?
Um, last year. Or, yeah, last year.
Well, I know that there have been events at the high school this year that there, there wasn't Wi-Fi available and they needed a password to get on, so.
Let me check into it. There should be at two-thirty every day until seven-thirty in the morning. So from after school until the beginning and then all, and also on Saturdays and Sundays. There should be a Wi-Fi called FPS Public.
Okay.
And you should be able to get on that without any password needed. So if that hasn't been popped, I'm not here, you know, all night checking for that. But if that isn't showing up, then we've got a different problem. So we'll have to check into it.
Some of the events that they use, like the iPads for, like specifically, I know Sabre Spirit Club and selling some of their merchandise, they needed to do that to capture credit card charges?
Yep.
So events like that, you know, so, but there's, so there should be a public Wi-Fi available.
Yep, starting at two-thirty, at the, at the end of the high school day is when it turns on.
Thank you.
Is that only at the high school?
Across the district, any building.
So at elementary, elementary school, what happens at two-thirty versus nine AM?
Right. And, and so we had to make a decision, right? It's all or nothing. So middle school, elementary students are supposed to have their phones and other personal devices on them. So we, it hasn't been an issue. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight I is an impact fee discussion. Do you have the resolution with you?
I don't. I can bring, I can get them. I thought we had them.
No, they're not, they're not on there. Okay. So, um, uh, Dr. Miller and I and, and Mr. Millsy were bringing, um, an impact fee discussion to the board. I know Dr. Miller had informed the board of, um, what transpired at the last common council meeting regarding impact fees. And, uh, I was there, um, Dr. Miller, Mr. Millsy and Mr. Gamble, uh, he was there. We, it, it's my thought in speaking with Dr. Miller and Mr. Millsy that we should, as a board, think about, um, taking a stand ourselves. Because in the past, it, it has been the district that has put forth a statement to the city regarding impact fees. It didn't come from the board. And so we have, um, put together a resolution to come before the board for your approval. And if, if it doesn't fit what we have, our feelings, of course, we can change it. Dr. Miller is getting the copy. She thought it was inside the packet. So, um, the, Dr. Miller worked and Mr. Millsy worked on putting facts into the resolution. We're basing everything on facts, um, not opinions. Um, if anyone, a, a board member or community members, um, want to go to a council meeting and, um, give your personal opinions, you can do that. Or you can even actually speak as an individual board member, um, um, at a council meeting about impact fees. But, uh, I'm going, I'm going to read the, start reading the resolution because Dr. Miller is getting the copies. But, um, and then you'll be able to look at it. But, um, Franklin Public Schools Board of Education Resolution to the City of Franklin Common Council to exempt school districts from impact fees retroactive to January first, twenty seventeen. Whereas the City of Franklin Common Council on March third, twenty twenty, received the results of an impact fee study recommending the elimination of impact fees for public schools. Including ninety thousand, sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents in fees being charged to Franklin Public Schools by the city for the new Forest Park Middle School. And whereas on November fifth, twenty thirteen, the Common Council voted unanimously to prepare an ordinance revision to section ninety-two dash nine, impact fees. To provide an exemption of public schools from the application of impact fees applicable to institutional or non-residential development. And whereas the Franklin Municipal Code exempts from impact fees every other form of government, including the City of Franklin, but not the school district. And whereas the City of Franklin Impact Fee Task Force determined the Franklin Public Schools should receive impact fee money based on the added cost of additional students from new subdivisions. And whereas according to the City of Franklin Ordinance ninety-two dash twelve thirty-two, impact fees were only intended to be charged to subdivision development. And that the Franklin Public Schools was to, to receive the largest single impact fee amount. And whereas the C- City of Franklin entered into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement to facilitate the adequate provision of school facilities to collect impact fees for school sites and facilities to disperse the amounts collected to Franklin Public Schools. Whereas charging impact fees to public schools shifts the cost of growth to all property taxpayers of the school district instead of being paid by the developers that caused the growth. And whereas Franklin Public Schools did not add a new school to the existing schools in the community. Rather, the new school was constructed on the same property and replaced an existing school and did not increase the number of students requiring services from the city. And whereas regarding, regardless of any neighboring city that may charge impact fees to a school district. The intent of Wisconsin law is to allow municipality to collect impact fees from entities that cause growth. Franklin Public Schools does not cause growth. Rather, Franklin Public Schools responds to the growth caused by the development which has been approved by the City of Franklin. And whereas the ninety thousand, sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents collected from taxpayers for the education of the students of the Franklin Public Schools, if paid to the city, will not be used to educate students. Therefore, be it resolved that in the best interest of the entire community, the Franklin Public Schools Board of Education recommends the City of Franklin Common Council follow the impact fee study recommendation and exempt public school districts from impact fees. And do so by including school districts in the list of government entities that are not institutional. In the Franklin Municipal Code ninety-two dash nine, definition of institutional development and make this retroactive to January first, twenty seventeen. So that's the resolution.
Here, here. In the third whereas, the third paragraph down, Franklin Municipal Code exempts from impact fees every other form of government. And the reason it impacts every other form of government is what? Why does it do that?
What do you mean impacts?
Well, it says, it says here, the Franklin Municipal Code exempts from impact fees every other form of government. So it's exempting any government entity in Franklin from impact fees. Why do they do that?
Because the intent of impact fees is to, um, respond to growth and development.
Okay. So, I'm just, I, I just wanted you to verbalize that. And I'm trying to get something straight here as far as the wording. So it's saying Franklin Municipal Code exempts from impact fees every other form of government, including the City of Franklin, but not the school district. Should we be saying, which is also funded by individual taxes? I mean, saying that we are the same thing as a government entity? You know, try, try to reiterate that fact that the government is funded by taxes and so is the school district. So why are we being charged impact fees?
But not the school district, which is also a government entity.
Correct. I mean, just kind of reiterating that verbally.
Also a government entity.
Yeah, which is also a government entity. Add that up. Okay, I get that. That's kind of where I was going. Thank you. You clarified what I was kind of thinking.
This is approved tonight. We can just quickly make the change.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yes, Mr. Scott.
Yeah, in the eighth paragraph down, um, whereas Franklin Public Schools did not add a new school, um, we may be adding schools in the future. Uh, I'm not, does that?
Well, this is about retroac, that's about retroactive. So.
Should we maybe state that?
We do state it, but I, I don't, I don't.
I think we're, it's like we're trying to line up fifty different reasons. I think you should focus on the reason.
Stay on this topic.
You only need one reason here. We're not a government entity. Everything else is exempt. That's just.
Part of this is because in, um, meetings prior to the design of this resolution, these were things that were brought up by members of the council. And there were actually one, at least one council member who said, they didn't build a new school. They just replaced a school. So I think it's important to confirm that with the council, that we didn't even add a school. We built a new school. But we didn't add a school or, or something that would cause additional services in need for infrastructure.
Should we specify then in, in that paragraph somewhere and say, therefore, the two thousand seventeen impact fee for this should be, you know, refunded or something more specific?
In the, um, report that they have from their own study, it's there. It indicates that, that that, there's, there's, uh, suggestion that refunds be made in their own report.
So, so they have their own report, which I believe Dr. Miller linked you to, which suggests that we can receive the impact fees back. Um, and we want to try to keep this to one page purposely. And as I said, all fa, all factual, um, no opinion.
Can I ask what, paragraph four, there was an impact fee task force? When was that? When does that go back?
Mr. Millsor?
Nineteen ninety-two.
That's ninety-two?
You said that was with Mayor Clement, Clements, correct?
Right. I was on that task force.
But, there's no legislative change. Just a recommendation?
That was the recommendation to the council and then the council adopted that and that's when impact fees started. And one of the findings of the task force was that the entity that was most affected by growth was the school district. And we had the largest impact fee on there. And after adopting that resolution, they created an intergovernmental agreement for collecting the money for us and giving us the money. And at that point, the state of Wisconsin said, in their infinite wisdom, there is no impact on school districts from growth.
So, that's when it got derailed.
So, that's when it got derailed and we could not have, we could not collect any impact fee money. So, then school districts were taken out of the impact fees and it was only the city. And then, ten years later, in the two thousand two, two thousand four range, they went, looked at it again. They decided they needed more categories. So, then it wasn't only residential. They came up with amounts for industrial and commercial and all of that. And then, they started saying, "Well, you know, the school district is building, they're adding on to the high school. That's, that's growth. That's costing us money." And so, every time we add on, they're charging us. They don't really even have a calculation for this. The first time when we added on the bathrooms at the football field and the concession stand, they only have numbers for residential and those kinds of things. So, they tried to equate it by the number of people that attend the football game and how long the football game lasts or how long we use the stadium. And I think the fee was over a hundred thousand dollars to put those bathrooms in. And we went to the mayor at the time, Mayor Taylor, and told him that it was at least slightly ridiculous that we would pay that kind of amount. And they recalculated it and it was about three thousand dollars.
So, this task force, the cit, and the city ordinance, that's kind of chronology. You're laying a groundwork here, but that's specific to.
Yeah, we're laying the groundwork to say the school district was never meant to pay impact fees. That came later in the process. It was never envisioned that the school district would pay impact fees.
I think if you really want to continue to tell that story and you know the whereas, whereas the state just threw that all out and.
Well, I think in looking, I mean, there's a lot here and I think if, I'm not trying to rip this apart, but I mean, the first paragraph hits home. The second one is right there. The third one with those changes makes a lot of sense. I could say if we're going to get a little murky, it would be in paragraph four and five, maybe even six.
Those are all linked.
They're, they all make a lot of sense to those with the context and the history of how this came about. And maybe, and maybe, I don't know, maybe that is required. Maybe we do need that in here, but for someone without that history.
After listening to the comments by the common council members, these items don't mean anything to them. I mean, they had just heard their own study tell them that this was the thing to do and they had read it in the packet and that was out the window in a second.
Why was it out the window?
I don't know.
I mean, that's the key. The first one does it.
And they couldn't even remember, they couldn't even remember the last action on this in twenty seventeen, what happened. It was twenty seventeen, no, twenty fifteen. Yeah, they couldn't remember.
Why it didn't.
Why it didn't pass. Well, it was because Alderman Schmidt made the motion and no one seconded it. So, we were in the audience.
So, the resolution will become part of the packet that the council would receive. But there's also a hearing, right? So, there, there, and we want people there to speak to these. So, it's important that you know that we've just kind of documented everything here. But what, what we'll do is we'll stand before the council and say, we'll hit the highlights is what I'm saying in, in the hearing. We'll have people present what's really important in this document. But we don't want to miss anything because any given council member could be pinpointing any one of these things as something that matters to them. So, I would not recommend taking anything out of the resolution.
Yep. And the last whereas is the key to this whole thing is if they take ninety thousand dollars from us, that is money that will not educate students.
And Mayor Taylor, he agreed, and the city attorney, this was taxation.
Mayor Olson?
No, Mayor Taylor.
Oh, oh.
Agreed.
Okay.
He agreed.
You gotta rewind a little bit to understand this thing.
Yeah, he agreed this was, it was double taxation. He said those words. And, I mean, this goes way back, you know, so.
All right, I think the last three items are really, they're really at home. I mean, you're right with the last one with the dollar amount in there, but we didn't, we didn't, we didn't create a new school. We replaced the school. We don't cause the growth.
I wouldn't hang my hat on that though, because we're going to build new schools and then they can say, "Well, you agree that was owned because of the new."
So, is our, is our goal to not, not spend the ninety thousand dollars now, obviously, but also exempt us?
In the future.
In the future, right? That, that's.
Yes, because we don't build a school if we don't need to. We only go to school because there's growth that you need to add one.
Understanding completely, which is why, which is why I think the existing school is, I don't know if it needs to be reworked. I don't know if it, it just reads as, okay, we're exempting this time.
Well, we could have a document that's, that's this.
But I'm not.
That's this detail.
We're asking them to change ninety-two dash nine, retroactive to twenty seventeen. And that's a permanent change in the ordinance.
Got it. Great.
I think we have to keep in mind that there's going to be two audiences here. We're going to have to have, we have a document here that is going to be specific to the council in the packet. But we also are going to be fighting the court of public opinion here and I think that's where we want to get the message out. So, we could still use, if we don't want to have this entire document available, we could still use bullet points from this or certain whereas's in here to make sure that the public understands what's going on. Because my point is they may get lost in the weeds in paragraph four, five, six and seven.
Do it chronologically from the beginning. Put it all in.
Four, five, six.
Instead of jumping around, start with four, which is the first thing, and then just do it chronologically as far as these things that happen.
That would make sense if you were to add.
Put some dates.
Add the dates where the task force came into play.
Yes, and then, then the next thing, this ordinance, I don't know when that was. And then, just change the order if you want to keep everything, but.
Do you really think that matters to them?
Yeah, because you're telling a story.
Well, I mean, we're not, we're not taking anything out. We're just, we're just putting it in a different order and we're adding some, some key dates that would, I think that would help give some clarity, I think. So, I didn't, that was the first question we asked. When was this impact fee task force done?
I think if we make it a public document, what you're talking about is having that chronology is very effective. But what I saw on March third, they just want the money. They want to double tax the citizens of Franklin so they get an extra ninety thousand dollars.
We didn't even mention double taxation. And you.
Yeah.
That's not part of the, that's not, that's not a fact, saying double taxation.
It's a principle.
Well, we're not talking princ, we're talking fact.
Well, it's not, I don't, I would, I don't know.
You can stand up and say it at a meeting that it's double taxation, but we want to stick to facts in a resolution.
See, and I, I disagree. I don't think it is double taxation because that means that we're then going to be asking for that money from the general public to make up for this. That's not, that's not our point. Our point is, we're not like, we're going to submit a bill to the taxpayers for ninety grand. We're saying the money that we got that was supposed to be going to educate your kids, now it won't. So, I'm not saying we're double taxing. We're not double taxing. It's diverting.
Pay that bill. The only reason we're taxing is to pay that bill.
They didn't get taxed specifically to pay that bill. That bill is diverting.
Well, we have to tax them. We've got the bill.
It's diverting money from some other. No, but we're not going to seek retribu, reimbursement from our taxpayers. We're, we're now saying the money we thought we were going to spend toward our education now has to.
How do we get that money?
We're not going to. It's in the budget. It's got to be.
We got the money.
Right.
So, if we got to hold in the budget, we gotta.
Yes.
We have to talk one at a time. Because of transcribing here, we have to talk one at a time.
I see it as double taxing because if you take that money out of our budget and we, you know, ninety thousand is not a small sum, we still got to make up that kind of revenue, which is taxes on the citizens here.
Exactly.
So, it is, we got to hit, we, we've already taxed them, so we had our budget. Now, we get this ninety thousand plugged out of it. We still got to make that up. That's causing us to be the ones raising taxes again.
Well, I understand the, if you want to put this in chronological order and how you think that might not have an impact at the common council and you might be absolutely right, but I think we have to understand that this document is not just for that audience. We need to have something that's going to be very plain. You can read it very easily. So, they start getting phone calls or they start getting letters and they're going to wonder, "Well, wait, why are we doing this?" And I'm, I'm talking from our, our citizens. So, I think we have to, you know, and so, if you, you brought this to the board, you're looking for feedback. I think, you know, I would be on board with that feedback. Add some dates. Put this in, in type of order. Don't strip any language out. Just add some clarity.
So, I would need some direction then on how to have the board, without scheduling another meeting, review that and then have each of you sign.
When does this have to be submitted?
Well, the hearing's scheduled for April sixth, so this needs to be done pretty soon.
Could be done at the next meeting.
Between now and the next meeting.
Yeah, so, end of March, we could do it. That's not too late for their packet.
You could always, you could always get to the board members and have them sign it, I think. If we make the changes, if we're, if we're adding dates to three items, paragraphs four, five and six, and then putting them all in chronological order as best we can.
Not knowing how resolutions are normally constructed for the city, just the way it was, the way it reads was confusing as it's being read. And part of it is the way it's written with the whereas's and the whereas's and the whereas's.
That's how resolutions are written, but it's our, it's our resolution. It's not theirs.
Okay.
So, this is how board resolutions are written. If you, if you would check other.
Do they have to be written that way?
You don't like the whereas?
It's pretty standard.
Well, it's.
That's traditional.
I know it's traditional, but it made it very hard to follow. You start with your whereas and then you see there it'd be resolved. That's pretty standard. What you're trying to do is tell a story. Right.
No, we're making statements.
I don't want to, I don't, I don't think we changed them. You're making a group of statements. But it has to be understandable to, and I get the point where it has to be understandable not only for the city, for the city council, but others when they hear it and read it. If I, if I, I'll just throw this out here is when I, when I numbered these whereas's. Number one, I had as, as seven. I'll just read it off and then I can kind of explain it. Seven, five, six, one, two, three, four, eight, nine, ten. One was the tax, task force who put the date in there. The next thing was the city ordinance, put the date in there. The next thing was the intergovernmental cooperative agreement. If there's a date in there, we can put that in there. And then this fourth one talking about the impact fees are for the developers, not for the, not for the district. That lays the groundwork. Then chronologically, the way I saw it, twenty thirteen, so that's five. And then, actually, I take that back. The number one would be six. And then the next one would be twenty, twenty twenty, and then it would be seven. So, six, five, seven. And then, so it's twenty thirteen, twenty twenty, and then whereas Municipal Code exempts impact fees with the additional language that you mentioned. And then drop back down to the last bullet points that really bring it home.
So, I, I don't disagree, but I'll tell you why it was constructed this way. So, when I sat down to draft this, I started with the ninety thousand. Because if you just start reading this and you don't finish it, that's the most important point that I want to make is that we're being charged ninety thousand dollars. So, that's why that was there. The second most important point to me was that they conducted a study that said, "We shouldn't be charged this." So, that's why that was the second point that was made there. Okay, and then we get into some of the historical pieces. So, I, I understand what you're saying, but my vision for this was to, you know, if you only read the first half of this, you get the important points out of it. The other idea was, we would share this with our families, but there would be a cover letter to it or an email or a message attached to it that says, "Hey, here's a resolution that our board put together about impact fees that would say, 'Here are the main ideas.'" So, if the parent never read the resolution, they'd get those main ideas. And that's the other reason I was hoping we could kind of conclude this because we want to start that campaign. I want to start sharing this information with families so they can show up on the sixth if they choose to and say, "We didn't pay our taxes for this reason. We paid our taxes for educating students." So, that was all of the logic that was in my head when I put this together. And I, I'm not taking offense to suggestions. I'm more than willing to do that. But I guess what I'm asking is if you could trust me and trust Mr. Millsor to redraw this and get the important points out there, I'd like to keep this moving. I'd like to have the board sign off on it so that we can start communicating what this is about with our families in our community. So, I, I guess I would not assume that they're only going to read the first one. I mean, it's.
Well.
I see a lot of these. Every month I read a lot of these. The most, if a board member is going to read this, they're going to be, they're going to focus on the bottom because that's what they're doing. The rest is all, I want to say flawed, but it builds.
And that's fine.
That's all they read. So, you maybe want to include the ninety thousand in the resolve statement. To your point that you want to make sure that number is known. I recommend at least between there.
Linda, the paper, on the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
I thought somebody was on the roof. No, what's going to be very important then is maybe your chronological listing might be better off in the letter to the parents.
I liked her explanation of that though.
I do too. I do too.
Leaving the first two like, like they're, that's, that's fine. Of course, I mean, me personally, I would definitely trust you and Jim to make some of the changes. If we can add the dates, add a little of that language after that. And then I think that hits the, the highlights and to keep this thing moving, that's fine.
I think, I thought it was strongly written as it was, just with the few changes we came up with. And I, I don't, I like that it's one page. So, with the few changes that we came up with, and I like Linda's change, especially since, especially with her experience in, in going over these. Maybe we should look at that and then, but going, but I think going forward, it's, it's, is important to get it, to get the messaging out quickly.
Right. So, what was that specific change that?
Include the amount in the.
In the whereas, okay.
In the resolve.
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 Yeah, resolve. Include that. Maybe reorder some things kind of in, in the middle of this is what I'm hearing as well, and put some dates in.
I still like the chronological. Well, you got to trust people. Talk about trust. We got to trust that people are going to read this whole thing and not just skip, right? Can we trust them to read the whole thing? We put this together?
I mean, I.
They're either going to read all of it or none of it.
I understand her point though.
I mean, these are elected people to.
I don't think you're trusting them to read it because it's not in chronological order. That's my opinion.
I think we can have it both ways. I think you can hit the two highlights in the, in one and two. Those two can stay there, but then we can maybe tweak those, those middle ones to add those dates and put those in chronological order. And so, I mean, I don't, I don't think we have to get quite that specific.
Let's put it in chronological order, but reverse. If you really think the most current thing should be first, then go the other way.
I'm fine with moving on how you want to do it.
Makes sense to me.
If we really have to go to the beginning of time. The most compelling argument is right there.
Yeah, just the thing that's most recent in the council's memory, which is the March third meeting. But it's not, it's not critical that we do it that way. I, I'm just explaining the rationale for what I did. It's more important that we get this out there. We communicate what the issue is and we engage parents in understanding and family and community members, what it is this is about, and they can advocate if they choose to. So, that's the important thing. We can definitely make those changes. I just don't know in terms of protocol, how to get that out to the board without it being. We can definitely make those changes. I just don't know in terms of protocol, how to get that out to the board without it being, we can't have this further discussion about it without a meeting.
No, we have to actually have a motion to approve the resolution. With the.
With the changes suggested.
Changes suggested. But.
Now, you say we have to approve the resolution before it's presented to the city council.
Yes.
Okay, that, so we could approve the resolution at the next board meeting?
Well, that's defeating the purpose of getting it out to the public.
Well, it could still be getting it out to the public. In your letter, you can say, this is a resolution that we're working on.
No, we don't, we want to approve a resolution the proper way. So if we're only putting in these minor changes of the amount of money in the bottom, and what was the first change?
Chronological order going in reverse, from the most recent to, to that, that would, that has, what has happened.
Okay, so just changing the chronological order, and then the one little change up here.
With the dates. With regard to the nineteen ninety-two, right, task force?
Paragraph three, at the end of paragraph three, we added, which is also a government entity. We wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, I've got that.
Okay.
I already did that.
So, and then paragraph four had a date, paragraph five had a date, and six had a date. I think, I think those are the critical changes with adding the amounts, the amount in the, therefore be it resolved.
Do we have dates for all of those, Mr. Milzer?
Um, yeah, I can.
Four, five, and six.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we can put dates in. It's possible that you could adopt the resolution as amended.
Right.
And you could sign off on it tonight.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping to do.
But I'd like to address this chronological, reverse chronological order thing. Literally, that would mean that the last statement would be the nineteen ninety-two task force statement, and that doesn't make any sense to me personally. So I don't think we have to, I mean, I'm actually okay now with all this discussion, me personally, with not changing the order of anything, but if we can add the language we're talking about, that'll get you what you want. Because your argument about making these first two paragraphs in order the way they are, that makes sense. I'm fine with that.
How many board members are okay with it as it is without chronological?
As it is, or with the, with the language?
As it was written.
And not the, with these language changes.
Okay, with the language changes.
But with this order.
With this order.
Is that, isn't that what you just said?
Yes.
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 So one, two, three, four, five. I don't know if that's raising a hand. So, so it, it's just, so.
To keep the process moving, right? That, that's the critical point here. Rather than wait a whole other two weeks.
We could argue about the changes, we could argue about the changes in paragraphs and changing one for the other, and what di- in reality, what difference is the, the chronology going to make?
As long as the wording is the same.
Yes. Having the date shows how far back this issue goes.
Yes.
I think anybody who reads it would pick that up and, wow, this has been going on that long?
But we need to get this out to our parents as soon as possible.
I, I agree with that, and I think maybe what's more important is April 6th, that we all show up at the, at the council meeting and speak our mind.
We do need board members to do that.
As citizens.
You can still speak as a board member if you're only giving your own opinion. You're saying, I'm a board member speaking on my own behalf. But, well, this will be included in the board packet, and then I, I can read the resolution, so.
I'd like to have Alderman Taylor explain his reasonings for calling us tax assassins, and saying we do not know how to handle our, our budget. You look at some of the surrounding districts, they don't, some of those don't know how to handle our budget. We do a fantastic job of handling our budget. I think our citizens need to remind him of that, because that's ridiculous. Agreed.
So then I'm looking for a motion to approve the Franklin Public Schools Board of Education Resolution to the City of Franklin Common Council to exempt school districts from impact fees retroactive to January 1st, 2017, as amended with the date changes and other language changes. Do you want to hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gamble, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague.
And just one more.
Mm-hmm.
I know we talked about the state's role in this fiasco, but we don't have any, can you add a whereas', add it on to maybe the, the interg- intergovernmental cooperative agreement? I mean, that looks like we're all set up to get money, but we didn't get the money. You're not really telling us why we didn't get money.
I don't think that helps our case.
No, it does not.
We already have a motion.
Yep.
Yep.
This is discussion.
Yeah, discussion.
So we can hear? No, it's on purpose.
Okay. I think if you, if you put that in there to the uninformed, which is almost everyone on this issue, they could come away with the impression that the state thought it was a bad idea for the school district to get money for this, so it must be okay for the school district to pay money for this, because the state didn't stop the city from doing that. So I, it doesn't, it, it gains no traction with a common council member, and it could bring people to the wrong conclusion.
Any other discussion?
Just one more point on that, actually. And they were just saying that the school district should receive it.
Right.
And so now they, pendulum has shifted all the way the wrong way. So, but good point.
They just didn't allow it, right?
Right.
Okay, and one last thing, just to let you know that the business, the finance director of the city changed his mind, and now he's in favor of us getting this passed, so. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
One other question, I'm sorry. Why did you pick retroactive to January 1st, 2017?
That was their recommendation. Their, in their study.
So the ninety thousand dollars is refunded?
The people they hired to do their impact fee study recommended that.
Okay, because I would say we should never, I don't care what date you have in there, it should never have happened. So I don't worry, put a date in the sand there.
Well, that's the recommendation, so.
Yeah.
Oh.
I think if we didn't have the date, then they could say, okay, fine, going forward, now give us our ninety thousand.
Okay. Why don't you make it nineteen ninety or something? When did it start? Nineteen ninety-two?
They would owe us a great deal of money then.
I think they would fight on that.
There we go.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gamble?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Woodkowski?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, then, so we want to try to get that signed to a separate sheet. Okay, thank you for your work in putting the resolution facts together. It was a lot of work. So then we will move on to item nine. Oh, okay, more work. School Board Liaison Report Personnel and Policy, policy fifty-two-eleven, student accept, sec, student acceptable use of technology. And this policy was reconfirmed March of 2019. The policy is unchanged, only adding the nondiscrimination language. And, um, of course, there are changes in the rules, the administrative rules.
If you have any questions about that, Ms. Solinsky has remained here for any of those questions. There aren't too many things. It's just kind of updating the newer technology pieces.
So I'm looking for a motion to reaffirm policy fifty-two-eleven as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis, is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move on to item nine B, fifty-four-ten, uh, physical force and school discipline, which was last revised of January 2014. You'll notice a change in the title to use of physical force by staff and school discipline. The updates conform to changes in state statute. Any other comments you wanted to make on this, Dr. Miller?
The policy, physical force, really didn't have a lot to do with student discipline. Student discipline was really more closely related to the language that was in our code of classroom conduct. So, um, the, the use of physical force is a, a policy that's required, that we have, and it really relates to what can occur, and the fact that corporal punishment can't occur, that needs to be stated as well. So, um, that's why that change occurred. The language you see there really does come from statute with regard to the use of physical force. And then, um, again, it really wasn't about school discipline, it was pretty much just about the use of physical force. So that, that, those are the changes to that policy.
So I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
To approve revised policy fifty-four-ten.
Yes, so moved.
Mr. Gamble?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis, any discussion?
I do have one point for me. I, I think if we, can we tie in the definition of corporal punishment, which is at the end, closer to, or in the first paragraph where corporal punishment is mentioned?
You want to move that up there?
Uh, yeah, maybe even after the first sentence.
We talked about that.
I mean, because you mention it, and if they don't know exactly what it means, then that's just hanging out there until at the very end it says, oh, by the way, this is what we meant by that. That was my only suggestion.
At first, we didn't even have that in, and then we, I suggested we put that definition in.
Oh, I think it's definitely good to have it in there.
Yeah, we didn't know if it should be up at the top.
That's fine.
I don't know how the whole.
Even as the second, even as the second sentence in that paragraph.
Right.
If the definition follows the, you know, the use of the phrase.
I can move it there.
You know, corporal punishment is defined as, you know, right at the top, and you know.
And then just the date. So this is revised now. When was it originally adopted, was it?
Seventy-eight, it's on there. February 22nd, nineteen seventy-eight.
And then it was last reviewed in fourteen. And that's why it was on the list.
Yep.
Oh, it's up on top.
Oh, it's on top, okay, usually, I see that now.
Any other discussion?
I said that's where revise is, at the bottom.
All right, hearing on, um, all those in favor, in favor of approving the revised policy fifty-four-ten with the additional changes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Next, we move on to nine C, uh, policy fifty-four hundred, code of classroom conduct, last revised January 2017. Among the changes are the addition of 4K students and updating, uh, the, the communications area. I don't know, Dr. Miller, if you want to add anything else, and then I, I'd also like to, uh, well, let's have a motion, and then we'll talk about, um, our community comment. So I'm looking for a motion to approve revised policy fifty-four hundred as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. And now for discussion. So I don't know if you would like to address anything Mrs. Spersky, Spersky said, as far as how we implement the conduct, uh, policy, because I, you know, the board, we set the policy and the rules.
There are no administrative rules.
Yeah, there's, there's no administrative rules, but you still have to set, set it in place, so.
Well.
Yeah.
I think, you know, what, what's in policy here relates to, and as Ms. Spersky said, it's, it's good policy, it relates to what we are doing. I think, um, the point was made, you've got to do that, you've got to make sure that you're following through on, on that. So I think of, of, within this policy, what's really important is one, two, and three at the bottom. The respective principal of each school shall designate sanctions, excluding corporal punishment, of course, for infraction of rules which shall relate in kind and degree to the infraction, help the student learn to take responsibility for his or her actions. And that's where it's going to look different for different children. And I think that's sometimes difficult for everyone to understand, because the, the consequences for one child may not cause that learning, um, the same as for another, right? So they may not exactly be the same consequences, because we want to cause that learning that later would shape that behavior. So, um, and then the last one, be directed where possible to reduce the effects of any harm which may have or been caused by students misconduct. So, um, these are the things to think about when we respond to mis, student conduct that doesn't conform to the, to what, what our expectations are in our schools. You know, we're really trying to approach, um, student conduct by working to engage our students. We have a goal in our coherence plan around student engagement. We're working very hard on social emotional learning, which is a very key element of shaping student behavior. So it isn't, um, it's proactive, it's the, it's the best approach to shaping student behavior. Consequences are important, we need them, we must have them, we have to follow through on them. But we'll be most successful if we further engage our students, and we do that through an environment that's safe, where they can learn. So it, it, there's a lot involved in, in this, and, um, we work hard at it, and we're continuing to work hard at it.
Well, that all sounds great, but from what I was getting from the comment was that when kids are swearing in the halls and disrespecting teachers, nothing's being done.
Well, I think that's a generalization, and, um, I, I would disagree that if a teacher hears a student using profanity, that absolutely nothing's done. Not everyone will know necessarily what was done or how it was handled, but, um, I would disagree that, you know, things are ignored that are inappropriate in our schools, and if they are, I'd want to know about that.
Well, the policy does say principals shall designate sanctions. Does that, to me, suggest there might be rules that, so they know in advance what sanctions might be? I understand that there can be individualized exceptions and deviations, but are there sanctions defined?
So in the handbooks for schools, there, there's more information on this, right? In terms of what the expectations are and what the sanctions are. It's, it's, there's more information than what's in policy.
In the school.
Right.
It's different in, it's different in the elementary schools than it is in the middle school, than it is in the high school, certainly.
So detentions and things like that would not be the same throughout the school district, because developmentally, you do things differently for children.
Are the expectations of hallway conduct and things like that ever discussed with the teachers as a group in, you know, saying this is what we are, are going to allow, and this is what we don't want to allow?
Yes.
Okay. But then it's a matter of enforcement.
If I recall, the last time I was in middle school and they passed in the hallway, teachers stand out, signed at the doors and things. I, I mean, I could see you're not going to catch every area when students are passing by, and, um, but I, I would hope a, as teachers going to say something to a student.
If they hear something, they, they must, and they should, but we have, you know, over a thousand students passing in the hallways, and not every teacher's out in the hall every passing period. They may be having a conversation with a student, and there'll be encounters that are not caught or seen. But, you know, students can report as well, and there's, there's follow-through when it's reported or when it's seen. And if there isn't, again, I would want to know about that.
So regarding the policy changes, are there any comments on any of that? Or, if, we have a. Or if we have a motion to approve it, so. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, item nine D is Board Liaison Reports. Do we have any reports today?
I did attend the SWSA meeting. Is that yesterday morning? It was. Judy was there. We had Speaker Voss was there to speak to board members and kind of his perception of what might be happening in the budget and what his visions were for education. And it was an interesting perspective. Judy, you had my mother.
I had some difficulty with some of the points that Representative Voss was making with regard to how we should educate students with special needs. He alluded to creating special schools for children who have needs because it's a more efficient way to spend tax dollars.
I've never heard him say that before.
Well, I guess two counties still have special schools.
Yeah.
I mean, counties used to, I mean, there's history behind that.
Yeah, in the 1950s.
Right.
I just can't believe. So it was a bit painful for me throughout. Everything, of course, was about being more efficient in money. And the key message was that nobody appreciates the legislators. Nobody thanks them, but you keep asking for money.
And I guess, I mean, this is a lobbying group, so I think we have to keep that in mind. That's what they hear is always. I mean, if I sit back and listen, I would have to say that's what it sounds like. We're not telling.
That's what he, he said to us. That's what constituents would be saying, yeah, to him. He's also a big choice advocate, really, really believes, believes strongly in choice. He indicated that K-12 should be like universities. Students should be able to pick any school they want to go to. Well, my kids didn't get to pick any university they wanted to go to. So. It, it's.
I mean, you could see he's coming from, I mean, he's got the whole bu- whole state budget he's got on.
Yep.
I mean, as a person has a balance, competing needs, you can see that comes through.
Yep.
You know, healthcare is huge.
Medicaid and.
And, and he felt good about doing something for the schools, so victory there and he. The other part was, there was some storytelling about mental health and what we, you know, suicide prevention. So they passed legislation to put that number on the ID card.
Right.
And they think they've done something.
And then, and then they, they have.
Detailed little thing that they mandate we all have to do and okay, check it off, I've done something. It's, it was an interesting perspective.
But we appreciated his visit and the opportunity to listen to his perspective and share some of our perspective, which he did listen to, so.
He comes by himself.
But there are a lot of people there and it was a good, good opportunity, I think, to learn for everyone.
Oh, he probably had to know there was gonna be competing viewpoints in that, you know, in that room in general.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it was, it was interesting. Okay, I also went to the symposium, the Equity Symposium, which was at Wauwataosa West last night, so it was a long day. But they had good food, so that made it all better. And that was also interesting, you know, the history of African-Americans and their experience and the idea of unconscious bias and how we look at kids. And I can't see, I did, and I guess we, the takeaway I, I got, I did share with Judy is that I, I really kind of don't really know what our student body is as far as diversity. I mean, we've seen, I did see some aspects of that in the report. I did look at the report. But do we really know what our, our diversity is, student population across all schools? The report that you alluded to is really just a high school. It doesn't really look at what our diversity is. And you may, we make, might make assumptions about it and not really know. And I would say visiting the cultural fair at the high school, we have a very different diversity than City of Milwaukee. I mean, there's just so many different cultures and it's not, it's not African-American. African-American is like 1%. So many, it's just different. We need to have some reality on what our diversity really looks like.
City of Milwaukee has a diverse culture too. It's, it's not all African-American.
Sure, but we should know what our district is, you know, what our number is.
Look up the, our, but you can look up the city census. I mean, we're gonna be having a new one, but if you look at that, uh, that even breaks it down to, you know, to, to give you an idea also besides our reports, but.
School district's 28% non-white if, if you're looking at just racial diversity in the school district, across the whole district.
Again, we, now you gave me that number and I'm supposed to like remember it? Can I have a place to, to see that? Would be nice, so I can go back to.
Sure, I'd be happy to share with you.
Being there it is.
I'd be happy to share with you.
Okay, thank you. And even some further break would be helpful because.
Sure.
And we look at Hispanics. That was one question, listening to that presentation, is they talked all about African-American. But I wonder, I mean, Hispanics are a different language. What's their experience in our schools? Quite different than African-American, but we don't typically, I, I don't think we associate them as part of the gap. I mean, we do. I don't know. We always, we're all making assumptions here. That was part of the presentation also, is that you might have your idea, but your, what's important is what your teachers have. And I appreciate that our work in that, really diving in to see what teachers, what their perceptions are of, what causes the gap and can I really do anything about it? So that was also interesting. And then the importance of having a diverse teaching staff to address some of those diversity issues. So it was, it was good, so. That's all I have to share.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports?
I talked with Mr. Reuter and Mr., sorry, Dr. Reuter and Dr. Cohen. Summer school is registration starting after spring break. March 20th, Professional Development Day, and they're being talking about Mind Frames, the book Mind Frames and the Social Emotional Learning Strategy. Also, they're planning project Lead the Way Training in August. And I also talked about the Equity Workshop that I missed.
Oh, that's good. Thank you. Any other liaison report? Thank you. And now we have our school and community engagement visits.
I did go to the First Annual, I hope, cultural event at the high school. I was also at the one last year. And this one's now called, a little bit different name. It's still kinda had the same vibe to it. And again, I thought it was excellent. But it seems like it's already outgrown that long hallway. And one of the drawbacks to it was with the performances all the way at the end and it wasn't on an elevated platform of any type. If you were more than about three deep trying to watch, you really couldn't see anything. And so I don't know if there's another way of maybe the gym where you've got bleachers that people could sit and watch, different ways of laying it out. Be interesting to see what it does next year.
Yeah, I stopped in for a bit there too and, but, but it, it's really evolved into so much more than it was three, three years ago was, I think, the very first one. So, yeah, they do need more space, but yeah, it's very good. I also, I, I participated in the Junior Achievement Program at Southwood Glen this past week. It's my second year. And this year I led Mrs. Ludwig's first grade class through the Our Families session. And we, I talked to the students about families, neighborhoods, businesses, their wants and needs, money and jobs. And the students were great. They're just really engaging and they did get silly at one time when we're talking about wants and needs. They started out at first really understanding wants and needs, but then all of a sudden, one student said, wings. I, I want wings. And another student said, I want wings. And then another one said, chicken wings. And then it's going on, wings, 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 but.
Yeah, from a Red Bull?
I don't know. They're really, it was a, a good class. And then I also volunteered this week at the Pleasant View Book Fair. And the fall sale they had went really well. I volunteered at that also. But as a result, the PTO arranged for every student at Pleasant View to receive one free book with a value of $9.99 or less. So they have over 450 students, so every student can have a book. And you could hear the cheers from the kids all the way down the hallways when the teachers were announcing that they could get the free books. Everybody loves a book, so.
Wow.
Yeah, that's great. Any other reports? Well, thank you. And item 10 is School Board Meeting Debriefing. Any comments on the meeting tonight?
I thought the high school kids were great.
Yes.
I really enjoyed Mr. Capco's report as well. And Mrs. Zelinski's too.
Yeah, it was a very good meeting, yes. Okay, item 11, Future Agenda Items. We have a Board Self-Evaluation Discuss- Board Self-Evaluation Discussion on March 25th, 2020. Youth Mental Health Report on April 8th, 2020. Ben Franklin Elementary School Presentation on April 8th, 2020. And a Friends of Franklin Recognition on April 8th, 2020. And the first reception, that's gonna be moved. I, I don't have a date right now. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, second by Mrs. Witkowski. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:44.